Good evening. I'd like to call to order our planning board meeting of October 13, 2015. The first item on the agenda is we would actually like to introduce to the town. I've changed the agenda just a second, I'll be right with you. The first item and I've just added to the agenda is to introduce Corey Pachico. He's the acting assistant town planner. He's joined our staff and been working with us for a couple of weeks and he's been quite helpful and very knowledgeable in a lot of areas and helping us quite a bit. I should all know who he is. Welcome, Corey. The next item on the agenda is the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, there are no corrections to the minutes. I recommend approval of the minutes of October 6, 2015. Second?
All of you in favor? Aye. In unanimous. Next item on the agenda is approval, not required plans. And there are none, Mr. Chairman. I do not see any, there are none. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decision, and I would look for someone to bring this forward. Yes?
Okay, this is for FWG LLC preliminary plan for proposed residential development consisting of 33 units of multifamily housing located at 125 Falmouth Woods Road. I move that the planning board vote the following findings and recommendations to address the issues raised under the subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth, Article 3, Preliminary Plans, for Plan Entitled Preliminary Plan Prepared for Avalon Consulting in Falmouth, prepared by Holmes McGrath, Inc., dated July 22, 2015, revised September 11, 2015, scale 1 inch equals 150 feet, four sheets. Findings: The planning board held public meetings on this application on August 11, August 18, and September 15, 2015, where the applicant and members of the public were allowed to address the board and offer their comments, concerns, and ideas. The board thanks everyone for their participation. The board was ready to decide this application at its meeting of October 6, but at the request of the applicant, additional comments were allowed for new information. The new information from the applicant suggested that the board failed to properly consider its application for a preliminary plan. The board is in receipt of the applicant's letter dated September 25, 2015, to the town planner, where counsel for the applicant puts forward interpretations of the planned residential development in PRD by law and requests its distribution to the board. The planning board members were properly alerted to the existence of this letter at its public meeting of September 29. Copies were made available to those members who requested such. The board finds this letter a recapitulation of the applicant's presentation made on the dates referenced above, together with matters applicable to the Cape Cod Commission, but not here. After careful consideration, the planning board declines to accept the interpretations advanced by the applicant that the planned residential district bylaw precludes the board from requiring the open space be dedicated for the use of and be accessible to the lot owners. Section 240-130 of the zoning bylaw speaks for itself, as do the past special permits issued by this board under the PRD bylaw. The board declines to accept the suggestion that specific language is required, and absence such, the board is bound by the open space dedication and configuration suggested by the applicant. The other new information was the supposed lack of guidance on the amount of required open space attributable to the golf course. The board reminds the applicant of his responsibility to calculate the required open space and depict such on the plan, eventually certified by the applicant's surveyor. The board's responsibility is to review this information and find it acceptable or not. The board rejects in its entirety the notion that it is a party in this calculation in order to reassure the applicant that his decision to invest in a definitive plan application is wise. The board refers the applicant to his paid advisors on this matter. Recommendations: One, a list of waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land must be included as part of the definitive plan application. Two, the site is located in the Wild Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District. Therefore, the definitive plan application must include an analysis of development impact pursuant to Article 21 of the zoning bylaw. The applicant is advised to review private sewage treatment facilities with the wastewater superintendent and Board of Health prior to definitive plan submittal. Three, the preliminary plan depicts a one-way circulation pattern for the proposed, in quotes, "Road A." The planning board is disinclined to approve this concept, given the number of lots. A standard subdivision road within the proposed 30-foot layout is preferred. Four, the plan depicts sewer, water, telephone, and power utilities utilizing the open space and an easement over lots 6 and 7. To the extent practicable, all utilities should remain in the road layouts. Five, the grouping of lots cannot exceed five. A reconfiguration of lots 1 through 16 is necessary. Six, the applicant's attention is directed to the water superintendent's referral dated August 11, 2015, where fire flow in PRD's water pressure is raised as an issue. Demonstration of adequate fire flow at the time of definitive plan application is necessary. Seven, a redesign of lot configuration or a relocation of fairway number one to protect prospective lot owners and their property is highly recommended. Eight, the open space as proposed is isolated, fragmented, not contiguous, and of little or no practical use to the owners of the lots in the subdivision. The applicant is advised to consolidate the open space into a more practical configuration in keeping with past planning board decisions under the planned residential development bylaw. The provision of off-site open space may be considered by the board. Nine, a revised preliminary application is strongly recommended prior to definitive plan application.
I would second the motion.
Yes, Ralph?
Well, from the beginning, this was a proposal referred to as multifamily housing, which according to our definitions is three or more suites per unit. And that has been withdrawn by the applicant, and now we are dealing with individual units. So I would like to offer an amendment to item number nine that was just read, and to add the words, after a revised preliminary application strongly recommended prior to definitive plan application, the word "multifamily" should not be used.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Jim, you've got to ask for a discussion, please.
Would that anyway impact the actual findings, or... That's my only question. Maybe that's something we need to ask staff about. Just checking, okay.
Yes, Pat?
What we're doing here is saying that we would be looking for another revised preliminary plan. If we say the word "multifamily" should not be used, we would preclude their proposing multifamily in another preliminary plan. I think it should not even be addressed in this, because it's another plan that we're suggesting they do. And we'd be directing them how to do the plan, more than we should.
Ralph, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I disagree with Pat, because the applicant has decided not to apply as a multifamily development. And so therefore, I don't want them to come back to us with another multifamily proposal, because then we're going to start all over from round zero. So that's my reasoning.
I have a question. Isn't this, given that this is just a preliminary review, isn't it, don't they still have complete flexibility? So if they wanted to go to multifamily, they could? I think I agree with Pat about maybe not put that in there. Because it's not like they're in a hearing process, it's just a preliminary review.
I myself thought it was just staying to the original application and just following the track of it and being preliminary. That's the reason why I didn't bring it up, but I understand your concern, Ralph. So we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Back on, any other discussion on the main motion? Call for the vote, all in favor of the main motion? Aye. opposed? None? Motion carries. Next item.
Jim, it was a lot of homework this week.
I did. It all came in this.
With your permission.
Yes?
So you have a revised draft of the accessory apartment bylaw. I'll just go over the changes that I made on your behalf of relative discussions. And you'll see down on item number five, I tried to address Paul's concern about being a little bit too direct on how they should be able to place entrances and whatnot. So I deleted those words, you see they're struck and out, screened or placed appropriately. I simply provided in a manner to ensure compatibility. You leave the design solution to the designer. I've also added language to number seven, so we are consistent with the new definition up front that you can also be in an accessory structure. So the accessory use limitation is both to the single-family residents or any accessory structure incidental thereto. So that's be like a garage, a barn, or something along those lines. And then you'll also see that pursuant to the board's request, I've researched all the, or sample at least, of the bylaws on Cape Cod. Because one of the fundamental questions the board had likely would guide us on tonight is whether this should be by right or special permit. And you'll see there's five other towns represented here, and the town that allows it as a matter of right is Barnstable bylaw. And they allow it up to 800 square feet by right in all residential districts. Anything over 800 square feet, up to 1,200 square feet, would require the issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals. And that is the formula-driven example the board was discussing briefly at your last meeting. We want something formula-driven. We're looking for some combination of by right and special permit. The only town I find on Cape Cod is Barnstable. The other towns apparently require a special permit. But you have those examples there, they're from Born and Mashpee and Yarmouth and Sandwich. And as I stated, Barnstable, I sort of like the Barnstable formula-driven methods. But it's for the board's edification tonight to compare those Cape Cod ADU bylaws. The question is a very important question that Ralph brought up, that we've given a great deal of staff time to consider, is what happens to the existing special permit There may be a special permit that issued for an ADU with an affordability requirement or ownership, whatever that might be. And what are the implications if we go by right? Pretty much the consensus is that just like the special permit for a contractor's yard, once we made it a special, I'm sorry, a by right use in a light industrial seat district, those conditions would disappear. So it's something that we'll have to kind of incorporate into some sort of language. If in fact we want those to remain, we're going to have to address that. But best to bring it up early in the discussions, as Ralph brought up, and if it's something we want to pursue, we'll pursue some of it, we'll pursue some of the language for you. And then there was another question about a local amnesty provision. There is an amnesty provision we had back in 2011, I believe it was expired. The Barnstable bylaw also has an amnesty provision to allow people who didn't secure any permits to at least come in and, to the extent that they can bring things back to code, we would urge them to do that. And my sense is it's something we should probably incorporate here, and you may want to take a look at the Barnstable example, too. We have an, plus our own bylaw, to at least bring forward those who simply have code problems and IRS problems, and as a matter of right or special permit, depends on the formula that this board comes up with. But that's what we've put together for you in the last week or so. I think one of the important things I need to hear from the board tonight, again, is where you're leaning on by right versus special permit and amnesty or not. Because if you're leaning towards special permit, then I don't have to really delve into the questions of forgiving the conditions of prior special permits. So if we can get a little guidance on that tonight, that'd be good.
Yes, Ralph?
I'm inclined to do it by special permit, because in the way in which we've been talking, part of what we're trying to do is make it work, see how it works. If it's working well, we could at that point in time, if we chose to do so, change it to be by right, I think. But this is something that we are trying to implement, that because of its size, the 450 to, what was it, 750 square feet, we're trying to, by virtue of size, keep it affordable. It doesn't always work, but that's one of the things we're doing. So I think at that point, when we reevaluate how it's working, we can look to see whether we wanted to change it to by right instead of a special permit. At this point, I'm inclined to keep a special permit, the other reason being that we don't want it to be used for commercial accommodations or summer rentals. And that brings up, how is that going to be controlled? Should there be a monitor that's assigned when the special permit issues instead of by right? Should an entity be monitoring that this is really working in that manner? Because we all know, in this town, any kind of enforcement is always complaint-driven.
I'm fairly, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just adding some comments. I think this is a discussion we're going to keep open for a while. I don't want to really close it off. But we passed a bylaw on summer rentals, and there is no enforcement of it, you know. So just because we say it, I mean, that's really a difficult structure. I don't know how, I know, I think that the town expected that the realtors were at all, fill out the forms and monitor and send it all thing, but I don't know if that's happening. I really don't know much about it. I just think that's, it is a very difficult question, and I think it's open for a lot of discussion.
That's why I bring you up, monitoring.
Right, right, and I agree. And I agree with going slow, but I would really like to have the discussion, maybe not go forward, but one of the things, with two money special permits, things never happen. I think the goal in the long range is to find a way to have it done by right, but maybe not right away. So that part, maybe there's a way that we could do it in a smaller area. But I'm not arguing either point, I just want to have more discussion on it and talk about it.
A couple things for keeping tabs on it, Pat's question, maybe what Barnstable does, they have an annual affidavit, and I'm wondering if some mechanism like that could be incorporated in the owner's tax bills that get sent out, when they set up a tax bill, they have to develop this affidavit, listing the tenants, which would also help the tenants if they want to get a beach sticker or something like that to improve residency, owner's license, stuff like that. So I think there might be a way of doing that, would be putting the burden on another apartment against it. It's something that we can discuss. And the other piece is the by right versus special permit. And though I agree with you, we're trying to make this simpler, and I wondered who would be issuing a special permit? If it was a special permit just issued by the building commissioner, where you're filling out the regular building permit and it comes under that purview, and then he has another set of directives that he has to look at in order to issue that permit, I think I would go with that. But they have to go before, to fill out billing permit, and then have to go before the ZBA or another board in town. It's that extra layer of bureaucracy that I'd like to see reduced or eliminated. And I'd like the idea of Barnstable's about the apartment size, and Doug, I think you mentioned percentage.
Right.
And they include both, exceeding 800 square feet or 50 percent. I think that's a good way of picking a number, so it does give the homeowner a little bit of leeway. And then, and when it exceeds something, then a special permit would...
Whichever's smaller.
Yeah, yeah, whichever's small. So if you've got a bigger dwelling that is going to exceed the 1,200 square feet, then a special permit would kick in. It might give people incentive to keep the apartment small, which would hopefully make them more affordable. Those are my thoughts.
Yes, Doug?
And I see that Barnstable really is just dealing with family, just a family apartment. It's not accessory apartment for general use. So that could be a different factor.
I always thought an important component that these would, there would have to be, at least one of the units has to be owner-occupied. I don't think we want to be creating two family homes. The idea of accessory is, you know, that somebody lives there. I think, at least that was my thoughts. I'd like to hear what your other thoughts, but at least one of the units need to be owner-occupied. I actually envisioned a transition from a family, a larger family, growing up in a home and grandparents there, and then when they're down to, there's only one or two of the original owners, that they could actually move into the accessory, and the other family could take over the other side, but that there'd always be, you know, an owner-occupant in it, is the way I was thinking of it. That's what I wanted to, that was my vision of it, but I'd like to see what you guys think.
I recognize the concern, because it's pretty overreaching, covers a lot of area. And you mentioned you were in a target area, I think Mr. Velasquez mentioned that in the earlier hearing, that I'm curious whether there's a way we could target a particular part of town and try to implement this on that basis, and then see how it works out. Works out well, we could always expand. I'd like to have a little discussion on that issue, because I thought that had a lot of merit.
We're going to go far end and go back, if you don't mind?
Sure. Well, one of the things, like Brian was mentioning, you know, wanted to know if we wanted special permit or by right. What we decide to do, in my opinion, decides whether it should be special permit or by right. Like you said, if we go to a certain area that you can control it, like an outline area or one of those...
Overlay districts?
Overlay districts. Then maybe I could understand a by right in that district. But if you're looking to whole-blanketly make a bylaw that says that this can be done anywhere, you're really rezoning the entire town and saying that anybody could then have a two-family home. So that's what, what we're going to do, strikes it to me, is how you should do it.
But Ken, I am differentiating, an accessory apartment compared to a two-family, two-family home has, you know, is an investment property that you can sell it by and now...
I understand, but...
So let's make, let's not get that mixed up.
But it's still the same difference. I mean, that means every, if you make a blanket, that means every home in the town could have another apartment in it. And I didn't think that was the intention, but my point here is, depending on what you decide to do, I believe decides whether it should be by right or special permit. So it's a whole thing you have to look at before you can make, you know, decide which way you want to go on that.
Doug?
I think we were, I don't know if it was just me asking Brian questions, but I think he had mentioned maybe we should consider starting in just general residence, because that mostly abuts business areas and wouldn't actually be served by sewer, but it would be close to transportation and more of in a downtown area. So that could be a start. Or we could make our own overlay.
This way, yes, Paul?
I think there's another issue there, too, is the wastewater service. If it's on the sewer, that's one thing. If it's a septic tank, I think that has to be looked at as well, because by adding that additional dwelling, it may exceed the capacity of the unit. So I think that has to be part of it as well.
And if I could add one more thing?
Yes?
The, my friends at the Water Quality Committee reminded me that if we're going to increase density, then we should be considering alternative septics like denitrification. We're trying to make it an affordable thing, but, I mean, by creating another bedroom, they might have to do some work to their septic anyway, so maybe that would be the time to bring in the denitrifying unit.
That may not be affordable.
It might not be. It's a catch 22.
My hope, I may be overly optimistic, but with all the money we've spent studying all these other design alternatives, that maybe those groups could... all these other design alternatives, that maybe those groups could come up with something that was practical, that would help with this issue. Because they certainly have spent an awful lot of time and money studying those issues.
But that would only come into play in a coastal pond overlay or a water resource protection district.
Right.
So if we're in a downtown general residence, we're going to avoid a lot of that.
All needs to be considered. Ralph?
Yeah, I like Bob's point about trying to get some kind of documentation for the residents. And I believe that we get a census every year, and you have to list everyone that's on the property. So possibly that would be a way for the person occupying the accessory apartment to justify to whoever they're going for, for a license or a beach sticker or whatever else, they could just simply show a copy of that, and that would suffice for them to get whatever they're seeking. I'm also in favor of a special permit in this case. I think an accessory apartment is a special situation, and the word "special" is appropriate here. I don't want to make it any more onerous than anybody else, but if you have 30 homes in a development and one person wants to put in a accessory apartment, I think that the other people would have an issue if it wasn't required to have a special permit, because that would be changing the so-called culture of that area. So I'm in favor of that. I'm also in favor of Mr. Glasso's comment about some kind of a pilot project, that we do it, pass this bylaw, and have, maybe have a sundown date on it, which would require us to come back and revisit it and take a look at how successful or unsuccessful it was. So go with my comments for now.
Oh, I know, on the local comprehensive plan, we've been looking at, you know, the fact that we've had this bylaw in place for years and years, and it's not happening. And what we came up with is, most of the time, we had put too many restrictions on it to make it impossible. I would like to keep the discussion open on the special permit and see if there's a set of standards that we could develop that would give comfort to some of the same concerns, but enable houses that have the right lot size, the right septic system, and the right area, where it could be by right, but it would have to be a performance standard that would be acceptable to this board before, and town meeting, when we take there. And I just want to keep the discussion open, that's all I'm saying. I think, I think we need to, we came up with one of these bylaws a long time ago, and nothing's really happened. And the whole intention here is to focus on things that are going to bring it forward. And I'm afraid if we go too much back to saying, you can't do it for this, you can't do it for that, it just doesn't get done, that might be the case, and we may have to go that way, but I would just like to keep the conversation going. Yes, Ralph?
One other comment. Brian, do we have any idea of the success of the accessory apartment bylaws in these other towns, as far as, I mean, it might be a way of helping us, because, I mean, if we're looking at a bylaw born, and they don't have any accessory apartments, you know, then they ran into the same problem we did. I mean, if we could find out possibly what success these other towns who have a zoning bylaw for accessory apartments, to what degree they are successful...
Or failure.
Okay.
Or not. I don't know if that's, just maybe the ones closest to us regionally.
I know all the planners in those towns, and we often get together and talk about these issues, and I'll do that, no problem.
That'd be great, thanks.
Yes, Paul?
What troubles me with a special permit, particularly in regard to something like this, when we're trying to go for affordability, is we get the expense, because everybody who comes for a special permit feels they need to hire an attorney. And if we can somehow give, yeah.
Ask in terms of recognition.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just wondering if a special permit could be given by staff? Because when we were looking at the 20%, upping it to 25%, and we were looking at that as a potential.
Well, the short answer...
Go ahead.
Short answer is no. However, there is the provision that the zoning board can appoint a zoning administrator, and they've done that. They're one of the few in the Commonwealth, is here in Falmouth. And they can delegate some of their responsibilities to the zoning administrator. It might be that perhaps the accessory apartment of a certain size, or some formula-driven concept here, could go to the zoning administrator. You wouldn't have to go to the Board of Appeals, you don't have to hire an attorney, it's formula-driven, sort of turn the crank, check, 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 off you go. And so that's the thought process I'm beginning to get here, because I'm hearing you want to retain some aspects of it, but you want to also relax some of the onerous things that happen. It's still appealable. Actually, the appeal goes to the Board of Appeals, if there is a person who's aggrieved, which is why most towns don't have a zoning administrator, they go directly to the zoning board, then it's up to the court. But it is possible for the zoning administrator to assume some of the duties of the zoning board, and this might be an appropriate case. So I'll look into that for the board.
But what if we wanted to keep a special permit here for the planning board during the three to five years that we're trying to see how this is working?
Yeah, remember, you can't sunset a zoning bylaw. Then you make them all non-conforming, they'll never get a mortgage, it'll all work. You can always review it, you can always look at, try to make it better, improve it. There was a sunset on amnesty, but once you create it, you make it by right, or you make these changes, you have to be very careful what you do when you extinguish it. So that's my advice to the board. But we'll look at that for it. Targeting, relaxing some of the special permit stuff, but to the extent, you will receive comments about that, especially in the environmentally sensitive areas. See, we come with a document here, and float it out there, so the water resource folks can see it, the housing folks can see it, the zoning board can see it. I think one more iteration, we'll be getting pretty close to doing that. And then, you know, something that'll sink your teeth in.
Yes, Doug?
So the building department has a regular building permit for major renovations, and then they have an express permit for windows and roofing and siding. You can actually get that online, and it's very simple, and it's very helpful, because a lot of times people were just skipping those permits, and now it makes it easier. So in that sense, maybe it could be a similar type of arrangement.
Yes, somewhere, I'm going to go far and then back.
Brian, if the zoning board would appoint a zoning administrator, there would be a cost involved with that, unless it was already a staff person, right?
It's an existing staff person. It's Sarit Boudreaux.
It would be an existing staff person.
It is Sarit Boudreaux.
Okay, so she could be appointed to be that...
Correct.
Okay.
Now, we're not allowed to add anymore.
Right.
She's the existing zoning administrator, and they could vote to delegate that assignment to her. Fine. Yes, Paul?
So with the special permit...
Sorry, Sarit.
With the special permit, the process would be the typical submission, and then appearing before the board, and there'd be a public hearing on it, correct?
Well, we're talking two different policies here, so...
I'm just trying to get the special permit process versus the by-right process.
Well, I think I heard two different processes discussed here tonight, and I don't think we focused 100% on either one. I think we talked about something that sounds like almost an administrative special permit or a full-blown special permit.
Right. The by-right process, you would go to the building department, check, check, check on the building permit, and, you know, you go through a plan review with the building commissioner and staff, and they issue a building permit. A zoning administrator assumes some of the duties of the zoning board. The butters are still notified.
Okay, that was what I was getting at.
But you essentially go to a hearing officer.
Okay.
And that hearing officer can actually issue the permit, appealable to the Board of Appeals.
That's what I was getting to, is about the butters, when they were notified, if they were notified. Okay. Thank you.
Ralph?
Well, it still does not preclude the person hiring an attorney. It could still, if they're still uncomfortable going to town hall to speak to the administrator, they still might have to, they still may choose to hire an attorney, so that doesn't necessarily mean that they will save that money. It would be, you would hope that they would. It would be simple enough so that they would not need to do that.
Paul, you got a comment?
I don't want to forget the issue of the targeted area. I think we need to pursue that a little bit. And the only comment I would make is, if you pick an area, say, I want to pick on Falmouth Heights, all of a sudden, people may say, well, I can get an accessory apartment for summer rental. And that was not the intent of this particular bylaw. So I think picking a particular area to see if it works might preclude some areas along the beach, although they would be probably a candidate for accessory apartments. But the intent, as I understand, is not to encourage rental apartments for seasons, but to fill in areas that we can have more rental apartments that are affordable.
Well, the language I saw had some timeframes on it. There were for seven months, or didn't we see some...
That's the owner occupation.
Okay.
I can assure Paul, we won't have the VE zones in the overall...
That's true. That might aggravate the situation.
So for our next discussion, should we break out the maps and try to delineate an area?
We can try to do that. Remember, today, you can have an accessory apartment in any residential zone, except general residence, and agricultural zones. It's about three-quarters of town. So I'd like to go back and see who's out there. So if you take it away, remember, you make them non-conforming.
Grant, we start pre-existing non-conforming...
You would need to have some grandfathering language.
Need to study that.
You need to study that just a little bit, so you're not, you know, non-conformities, you try to keep them to a minimum.
Okay.
So I...
Couple of comments, I think there's some people that may want to talk. I just wanted to say, we want to be very deliberative here and invite other interested parties to come read the files, if they can't get to these meetings...
Sure.
And get the information directly from you.
That's fine. So, right?
And I was going to see if there's any public comment.
It's up to you, Mr. Chair.
I thought I just, there's a couple of people here. Is there anything new that you haven't brought up before from any of the public? Keep in mind, we have recordings of everything you said before.
Thanks to Chairman Michael Glasso. Again, I'm chairman of the EDIC, but I'm not here speaking on behalf of the EDIC this evening, though housing's a very important issue to the EDIC. I do appreciate you incorporating some of the comments I made previously, I won't go over those. I do want to clear up one. I had previously mentioned, using some affordable housing funds has an incentive to maybe get some people to look at possibly deed restricting some of these units in the future. It's not a requirement, I'm not saying they're to be into the bylaws, but I think some folks, as Mr. Dryer mentioned, might need to upgrade their septic system in order to put in a new unit, and they may not have the funds to do that. But if we could offer them an incentive by offering them some funds from the Affordable Housing Fund, or CPC, that may allow them to go ahead and upgrade that unit. They would have to deed restrict their unit, but that's the trade-off, and it would help us get some additional units onto our inventory. So I just want to make sure I sort of cleared up that issue a little bit. It wasn't a requirement that you'd have to do that, it wasn't a requirement that the units would have to be affordable, but has an incentive for us to get some more affordable housing units, to provide some funds to people who may need it in order to build one of the units, and it could be a win for both. Thank you very much.
Good idea.
Thank you. So we'll keep this discussion going?
So just to recap for my own, you want me to check with the other towns for success rates, or issues, or lessons learned? You wanted to take a look at the 50% à la Barnstable under number two. Looks like you want me to take a look at, again, a Barnstable type of monitoring situation, or maybe incorporate perhaps, because there's a lot of angst about leaving the special permit world, leave it a special permit, but perhaps have the opportunity to have a more of a formula-driven administration, administrator-type special permit. Looks like we might have to grandfather, need some grandfathering language. If you're going to eliminate these things in all these other areas, you're going to have to really think about that seriously. And I guess that's enough for, actually, I'll try to get as much done as we can, keep it moving. And what I intend to do is put this next draft up on our webpage, and...
How about a time for that, to those people that couldn't make the meeting right now? We can kind of put them on notice when they should look for it. Pick your own time, Brian, I'm not pinning you down. Two weeks?
Soon.
Soon?
Soon, coming soon.
To an agenda near you.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
And as for, again, there are no, we can't incorporate financial incentives into a zoning bylaw. That's a conversation to have with perhaps management and the CPC.
Well, thank you, everybody. That was fruitful, I think we're moving this along. Appreciate everyone's input and out of the public. Next, we're going to talk about another important issue that could someday bring more housing for everyone here in Falmouth, which is really, when you look at our housing goals, that's really what we talk about here, our goals are, you know, to develop housing for everybody.
Again, I asked the board, and I kept a copy in the chairman's folder, so make sure you read the town meeting voted housing goals and policies. Keep them in mind, because all this flows out of that. Okay, with your permission, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So just like I asked the planning board for some guidance when we started our discussion on accessory apartments, I'd like to start off our discussion on a multifamily zone the same way, sort of tabula caza, what do you envision as a new, as a multifamily zone? And to help you, or help me, we have existing multifamily bylaws in business districts, and we have them in light industrial A districts, and we have them in business redevelopment districts. We actually have housing for the elderly in public use districts. So I guess my question for the board, and to start this discussion, is are you envisioning using an existing zone? Perhaps, say, in business redevelopment, in business redevelopment districts, you can have six units by right, if you're in a mixed-use development. And in general residence districts, you can have a three-family by right if one is, you know, affordable, but it's sort of a non-SHI type of affordable unit. Are you envisioning creation of another zone to be matched? An example might be an R4 district, lots of towns have four units by right, you know, eight units by special permit, sometimes it's 16 units by right, just depends on what that might be. It's important for me to know, because I will grab existing districts if you don't want to create a new one, or are you envisioning something brand-new? And what might those parameters be? You know, by right, by special permit, how many units, is it targeted? All those, all those fun things to discuss. Who wants to start?
I have, we've discussed it, and I've brought it up several times, and I haven't really identified, you know, a specific area, but what we've talked about in general, in the general terms about in our local comprehensive plan, is the growth needs to be in the core of our villages, you know, around the village centers, that that's where we need to increase the density, in areas that have the right linkages with transportation, as well as sewers, if possible. And we never really took it any deeper than that, other than just looking around the central cores, and that may mean we have to have some... And that may mean we have to have some kind of, I don't think we're there to the decisions you've asked for yet, but I think we, I'd like to hear what other people think.
In the best of all worlds, you know, blank slate in the town of Utopia, how would you create a multifamily zone?
I would lean, basically, I think what you said was true, but I think you could find the infrastructure areas that you might want to do that in existing areas. Because I think about all the areas that have transportation and resources such as stores and stuff are already in one of those districts or zones similar to where Brian mentioned. And I think it would be easier to take those zones and look at where you, what you might want to do in those zones that are already existing, rather than create something totally different.
Yes, Bob?
If it's not on the sewer, I think you're going to be limited by a formula of space and numbers of bedrooms. Because you have to have the septic system that would accommodate however many bedrooms, two-person occupancy, I think is the way they figure it, on the space. Can you put it on a 4,000-square-foot space? Okay, what kind of a septic system can you put on there that's going to accommodate? And remember, you also have to have a reserve for the system in case it fails. So I think wastewater treatment is going to limit what we can do for multifamily unless it is on the sewer. And as we envisioned it, when you're talking about much greater density in the smaller committee, I think we were envisioning it pretty much to be on the sewer to get the kind of density we were talking about. And that also limits where we can put it. So it may be a two-phase kind of thing that we're looking at. If you're on the sewer, then this applies. If you're not on the sewer, then that applies.
Yes, Doug?
Not too many are going to be on the sewer.
I know.
Because it's right down the middle of the street.
That's why then that applies.
Except for some of the industrial properties.
Right. But we can require that the denitification, septic, you know, that takes out half of the nitrogen, whereas the Title V's take out 10% or something. So it's an improvement. And I think that the village center idea, and I'm thinking probably an overlay within, whether it's a mile or a mile and a half, or some delineation of each village center. And it should be in each part of town. Initial talk.
Yes, Bob?
Yeah, we also have to be careful. The sewer isn't going to be the panacea for everything. There is a limit. We just can't keep adding on to it and adding on to it. So I agree with Ken that I would like to look at what districts we could work with as opposed to creating something new. Just the accessory apartment by law, we keep bumping into things. I mean, the point that Ralph brought up about other people who have already had permits. So there are all these other grandfathering issues and things like that. I think when you create a new one, we're going to run into more of those. Whereas if we just amend or augment some of the existing rules for the zones that we have this allowed for, maybe it's increasing the density by one unit or something like that. I think that that would be my preference.
I wouldn't want to preclude innovations in technology if someone came up with a system where they could solve the issue. And just because it's not on the sewer, they can't have it. So I would like, at least for discussion purposes, to kind of look at as an overlay district with performance standards. Understanding the real importance thing is it be on the sewer and/or a private solution that gets us to the same. Because I don't know a lot of, that seems to be something our town's very good at. We're getting better at it all the time. And it's an ongoing technology and who knows what the future, I mean, we make these decisions for 20, 40 years. We're very forward-thinking and viewing it and not just for what we know today. So I would like to keep it open. If there was a performance standard that could be achieved with private investment that we could keep the door open for it. And then I would like to see a bit more, an overlay district over the areas, just in case there's a little single-family zone that's right in the middle of it, you know. I don't know. I haven't studied it that clearly, but that's something we need to study and take our time in doing and not just run out and make it happen right away. I think it's something that has to be studied carefully, but I'd like to keep the discussion going on it. Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, just as a reminder that our definition of multifamily housing is three or more units.
Doug?
I think, I don't think the overlay of this sort would be as problematic as revising the apartment by law, because that's got a lot of stuff in place. This being new, you could put a ring around a village center and just say, either you're in it or you're out of it. And if you're in it, you qualify to get this benefit given, like Jim said, the performance standards can be met, denitification or whatever area requirements might be.
Yes, Bob?
I'm thinking out of the box a little bit here. There's a number of affordable housing developments along Scranton Avenue. There's water and sewer along that area. And I understand some are federally funded and some are state-funded. I'm curious whether it would be an opportunity to seek additional funding from state or federal sources to upgrade some of those facilities, because some are quite small. And I'm wondering if that's an avenue we might be able to, not to create a zone of low-income housing, but to improve what's there and at the same time increase the number of units in that area.
I think we need to be looking a little bit further as to the definition when we say multifamily, because when we say multifamily, I think we're thinking one, two, three, four bedrooms, whatever it might be. But I keep reading about micro apartments, which are maybe 250 square feet. And that would be to encourage singles, young people coming in here. And I think we need to look at that as part of a component of the multifamily housing.
Also, maybe we have square footage or percentage requirements, maybe a percentage of a lot size or something, some formula.
Yes, Doug?
I think when you're talking about an apartment size that's small, you'd be talking about a large building with many apartments, not just four units.
That's usually what it is, yes, when they're that small.
And that's something we could, we should find a place for here in town.
And we've also discussed cottages, you know. We didn't say we should, but it's just a discussion, but that there are locations in our town where there could be 10 or 15 cottages on a collective site, which would be kind of nice living. People wouldn't have to be in big buildings. They'd be affordable by their size alone. And we talked about that. I would, I think we should keep the discussion going on a lot of different alternatives and not, I'm not ready to push one decision thing. We really haven't, this is the first time since I've been on the board that we've even discussed this. So I'd like to just, you know, throw this out there and see over the next few months what it is we can come up with as a town collectively. Anybody else on the board?
I just wanted to ask, did, what we said, did it give you, I know you asked about, do we want to look for, you know, overlay or new zone or did it give you any kind of direction? I don't think it did. I think it went a little bit here, there, there. Okay.
No, with your permission, Jim, it's fine. I think what the board is grappling is you're heading in an overlay for an overlay. And that's okay. I think that's a good thing to pursue. As long as you start changing the core zoning in these villages, then you're kind of messing with people's business in it. And you'll get some wounded animal sounds for sure. So let me work on a little bit of an overlay district, maybe around some village centers, say Davisville. Maybe redefine what a unit is. Because that's what people are sometimes, you know, like Ralph says, it's three or more units, but the unit could be 500 square feet, the unit could be three bedrooms. So let me try to work on that a little bit, because I think that might take a little bit of the, I'm not sure what's a good word, concern of others that you're going to be introducing more nitrogen or traffic or whatever it might be. It really comes down to a function of what that unit is. So let me see if I can work on that and someone said percentage of lot size. Okay, that's good. So maybe start there. That's a good start. Cottage zoning is something I would ask the board to look at in your residential, in your residential zones. Instead of having individual lots, you could have, you know, instead of having all those individual lots, I know what you saw tonight earlier, you could actually have five-acre parcel and put 10 cottages on it. So that's a residential, not a multifamily.
We came up in the same discussion, so I grouped it in.
No, no, I'm just helping you out.
But it was, I'm not, I wasn't voting favorite or just bringing it up for discussion because it's something that we have talked about.
So let me, let me start there with, and I won't reinvent the wheel. I think I've seen this, you know, a couple examples out there. See if I can get that for you sometime soon.
But what did bring it up, we actually, I actually remember seeing, I won't get specific on it, there was a proposal from an applicant one time to put in six little cottages or, but that was in a business zone?
I don't believe it was. I remember this gentleman.
I don't remember the details.
They were from Florida. They can do this in Florida. Why can't we do it here? You're in New England.
Well, I'm not saying we should. I just wanted to keep the discussion open for it, that's all.
So let me take a look at that. If you have that worked for you sometime soon. Next two weeks. You have a busy hearing?
Next week, yeah.
Probably not the most appropriate. So probably, when you have time being, so I'll be, the multifamilies will probably in a couple of weeks.
So to assure everybody, these items will be brought up again. There'll be plenty of opportunity. The next item on the agenda is general correspondence. And we have a new letter in the file. It is from McGan's Crossing and it's to the board, Brian Currie and myself, and it has been referred to our council. Nope. It is now, tonight, as of today, because it's now public. It will be referred to our council.
I can read it. It's fine. I haven't read it, so you can read it and if you want to refer it to council, it's up to the board.
Well, we already have referred this matter to council. I thought it was the same thing.
I haven't seen that letter, Jim, I'm sorry. But you know, if you want to read it, that's fine. Or if you want to send it to council, that's fine. It's up to the board. It is under review by council and I do a meeting this Friday with our lawyers.
I think items, I think we, I want to make it clear that it has been referred to council and it's addressing the same issues.
Then I will do that on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So it's been addressed to the council?
Well, I think, as I recall, there was a letter back in August that this is the same issue. And the very next day it was referred to council. I actually saw the letter of transmittal on it. So it's a question, we need to get council to address it and push it forward.
What is the contents of this letter then?
Same as before. Ralph, if you'd like to see it, Ralph, if you'd like to read it, I don't care. I mean, I just, I just, it's the same thing.
Do I suggest to you, so I'm not going to read it for the board? If the board wants to hear it, I think you should read it. One of the comments here, it says, could you please provide us with the current status of referring this application to the town attorney?
Which I believe I just have.
So I lost the board's request. I'll bring it back on my Friday meeting.
Question from your audience?
I'm not recognizing anybody in this.
So there'll be a response soon?
I'm not at liberty to discuss that project with the board at this time, but I want it off my desk as badly as others. But I have a meeting this Friday. Council has had this package since August 26th. And I will be meeting with them Friday and hope to be able to brief the board soon.
That's the end of general correspondence. As Ralph, as your request, we have future agenda items to see if anyone, see if, you know, I'm pleased, the two things I've always been asking for was the accessory apartment by law and the multifamily zoning, and they have been on our agenda now for quite a while and I'm very happy with that. So that's, Ralph, do you have areas that you're concerned?
No, that's for everybody on the, on the planning board.
And it should be there.
I know, I'm sorry, Ralph. I didn't mean to single you out. I first referenced it, I was happy to have it on for myself. I didn't mean to, I go left and right. Can you have any issues? I'm just looking because you're at the end, Ralph. I'm sorry. As my habit is, I catch everybody if I look to one end and then the other, I have, I have the opportunity to see everybody. I didn't mean to single you out.
No offense taken.
Next is, next meeting, Tuesday, October 20th, 2015. We're, pretty big agenda coming up for that one, a lot of public comment. I'm sure we're going to see a large crowd. We're done. Any, that's it for our agenda tonight. Anything else?
Need to adjourn?
Second.
Is that the last meeting before town meeting?
Possibly not. I'm sorry, did the motion pass?
No, we didn't vote. He asked the question. We're still in discussion.
And we had a schedule sent us for the precinct meetings, so that should be decided and discussed next week.
Next week as well.
Because I think the first ones are the week after.
Are they on the agenda?
And we can always meet just before town meeting, at town meeting night.
If we have to.
Aye.